Good evening. Welcome to the Monday, April 10th Lebanon City Council meeting. Our first order of business will be the pledge allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, move on to the full call members. Matt Cook, go ahead, please.
Mike Kincaid.
Present.
Keith Campbell.
Here.
Morris Jones.
Here.
Dick Robertson.
There.
John Copeland.
Here.
Brent Wheat.
Present.
And Sierra Messenger.
Present.
Thank you.
Okay. Are the approval of the minutes from previous meeting? Are there any changes to the minutes?
Make the motion when you approve the minutes.
The motion is approved. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Disposed. All right, we are approved.
Sure.
All right, we'll move on to old business. First item up here is ordinance 2023-03. Council consider alley vacation adjacent to 517 Northwest Street. Ben Vajder.
Good evening, council. Just a real quick recap from the last meeting. This is an alley vacation request for a sixteen and a half foot unimproved alley right-of-way that exists between 517 and 523 Northwest Street. This is a right-of-way that was platted 100 years ago that was, has never been used for an alley that we've been able to figure out, and there's no utilities in there. And so the property owners came to us and asked if that could be vacated since they're essentially already using it for their yard anyway. So that's what the request is tonight, is to vacate that sixteen and a half foot unimproved alley right-of-way, and then it'll be split between those two property owners, and one half will be given to one and one half to the other. And that would be Jennifer Aruda is one of the property owners, and Clinton, and Kristy McCord are the other property owners. It's a quick recap. Happy answering questions if there are any.
Any questions for Ben on that, council?
No, sir.
Rob, can you read the ordinance, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Council ordinance 2023-03 again concerns an ordinance to vacate public ways, whereas it's the duty and the responsibility of the council to maintain the public right-of-ways for the benefit of the citizens of the city and to vacate those no longer needed for the benefit of the public. There's been filed before the City of Lebanon Plan Commission petition docket number 23-10 to vacate a portion of the unimproved alley right-of-way in Levy Lane subdivision, the original plat of Lebanon, specifically the sixteen and a half foot unimproved alley right-of-way between 517 Northwest Street and 523 Northwest Street, all defined as the real estate and described in Exhibits A and B. The Plan Commission voted eight to zero to send a favorable recommendation to this council for consideration. Therefore pursuant to Indiana Code, the city has the authority to vacate public right-of-ways and now finds that the public right-of-way identified in Exhibits A and B are no longer needed for the benefit of the public. After duly advertised in public hearing pursuant to Indiana Code, this council finds it's proper and necessary to vacate the public right-of-ways identified in Exhibits A and B. The conveyance of the real estate shall be to Jennifer Aruda and Clinton and Kristy McCord. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect in accordance with Indiana law.
Thank you, Rob. We had a public hearing at our last meeting, but if there's any public comment concerning ordinance 2023-03, please step forward. Say your name for the record. Singing them. Any discussion, comments from council?
Sir, make a motion when you approve.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Sierra. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Disposed. Ordinance 2023-03 is adopted unanimously. Thank you, council. All right, next up will be, this will be a slight change on the ordinance. Obviously with an annexation, we had to move the fiscal plan above the second reading of the official ordinance. So next up will be resolution 2023-04, which is also a correction. Fiscal plan associated with the Butler Weber annexation. Ben?
Thank you, Mayor. Council, just a quick overview of the fiscal plan associated here. As you're aware of the property that we've reviewed last time, it is currently a farm field, so there's really no assessed value associated with that property currently, or a very limited assessed value. And then we did receive some information from the developer about real high-level proposed investment for the property, which would allow us to do some projections. So I'll point to the, let's see, we'll start on page 12 and then go to page 13, and I'll just quickly highlight a couple of things on those two pages. So on page 12, this is essentially looking at the schedule for the assessed values associated with the annexation area, and how that would then affect the overall assessed value of the city, and then what the associated tax levy and tax rates. So as we've talked about on a number of times, really the biggest benefit is based on the assessed value of the property when it's annexed. In this case, there's a very limited assessed value. So as you see, the assessed value ramp up to 15 million in 2025, '26, up to 70 million in '27, pay '28. The net assessed value of the city increases similarly. The property tax levy follows the schedule of tax levy increases from DLGF. So what you actually see over time is that assuming all of this stays the same, the property tax rate for the city will actually decrease as a result because the property tax levy doesn't increase to the same rate of the assessed value. So future investment on this property will actually cause the tax rate to decrease from about .76 right now to .71 by '27, pay '28, assuming nothing else changes, there's no appeals or anything. So when you look at the overall revenue increases, it's relatively limited, but it's a huge benefit to the city for these additional increases because it causes our tax rate to be lowered, which is great for their existing taxpayers. So that's just kind of a quick overview of the change in assessed value, and then let me find. Where's the? All right, where's the page I'm looking for here? All right, I think I'm missing a page here. The other page I wanted to touch on is the cost associated with it, and I think I'm missing a page in my copy here. When looking at the overall costs associated with the annex area, again, it's very limited, again, because there's no existing uses there. So when you look at providing additional services to the annex territory, it's based on the existing use on the property, and since there are no existing uses, we really don't see any significant increases in costs associated with the city. So we have a breakdown of the additional revenue we'll see as a result of the increase in assessed value versus very limited costs. So again, we can see that the property pays for itself over time. And so that's a quick breakdown in the fiscal plan of those highlighted items. I'll be happy to answer any questions if there are any. And we do expect this property to develop. In fact, we've already got a PUD rezone that's been filed with our office for it to do a mixed-use development on the site. So that's where those projections on assessed value came from. They're expecting to start development of the property in the next 12 months to do a number of different residential products and a potential for some commercial development as well. So we do expect to see the assessed value significantly increase over the next five years as that starts to develop out. But again, the fiscal plan's based on the current conditions of the site, which is essentially a farm field at this point.
And Ben, the fiscal plan doesn't necessarily consider even the developer impact fees paid, right, from road impact or park impact?
It does not. No, it does not. This is just property tax condition. So yeah, this doesn't estimate road and park impact fees to be paid and the benefits there. It's just based on property tax.
Additional questions for Ben concerning the fiscal plan?
Yeah, Ben, how many residential units do you think would end up being there?
I don't know until they file their plans. I do know they're looking at a couple of different products, both single-family and duplex or townhomes. So we'll get the breakdown as soon as we start. We haven't even started reviewing their PUD rezone application. But it's 140 acres, I think, so you're probably looking at several hundred units over the...
Several hundred as in between 300 and...
I would guess, I'd be speculating right now because I haven't looked at the PUD rezone, but I think it's in the neighborhood of about 300 units.
Okay, thank you. But then that'll go through our planning process and review and all that as we go through that.
Yeah, that'll come back to the council. Like I said, I'm pretty sure that's on the May agenda, so you would see it at the end of May, early June. It would come for the PUD rezone to council. So you'll see all that information here in the next month or time.
Thank you. Any other questions for Ben? Would entertain a motion then, or excuse me, public comment on resolution 2023-04. Say your name for the record. Yeah. Rob, read it, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Council, resolution 2023-04 concerns resolution for this council establishing a fiscal plan for the annexation of certain territory, whereas the area to be annexed is legally described in Exhibits A and B. Pursuant to Indiana Code, this council is required to adopt a written fiscal plan prior to the passage of Annexation Ordinance 2023-04, whereas the required fiscal plan is included as Exhibit C in attached tier two made a part hereof, has been prepared and presented to this council for consideration. The fiscal plan has been reviewed and complies with the requirements Indiana Code. Therefore, this council hereby finds that the fiscal plan is approved for the areas sought to be annexed.
Thank you, Rob. Has been read. Further discussion from council?
Sir.
Now, I would entertain a motion concerning resolution 2023-04.
I'll make a motion when we approve resolution 2023-04 of the establishment of a fiscal plan for the annexation of certain territories to City of Lebanon.
We have motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from John. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Disposed. That is approved unanimously. Thank you, council. Okay, now we'll go back to the second reading of ordinance 2023-04. Council consider the Butler Ross Weber annexation. Ben?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a quick recap here. This is an annexation at the north part of the community, at the northwest corner of 300 North and State Road 39. I believe it's a little over 100 acres. It's being annexed at that intersection, or just northwest of that intersection. This went to the Plan Commission last month, and they provided a recommendation on zoning for that property and did recommend unanimously to assign the single-family residential SF zoning classification to the property. So that's what the ordinance suggests, is that it would be assigned to that single-family zoning classification, although we do expect them to come back in for a PUD rezone and look at the overall site with that Plan Unit Development Ordinance. But this will just put this base zoning in place currently before they move forward with that process once the annexation's effective. So this is the second reading tonight. Assuming that it is adopted tonight, then there's a 30-day waiting period before that annexation becomes effective. After that time, then they can move forward with the additional planning process and additional development requirements. So that is a quick rundown of the annexations before you tonight, and I'd be happy to answer any questions if there are any.
Questions for Ben at this time?
No, sir.
Okay. I'll have Rob read the ordinance, please.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Ordinance 2023 is an ordinance, again, for this council annexing certain territory to the City of Lebanon, whereas 100% of the owners of the parcels proposed for annexations are identified in Exhibits A and B. The annexation area is defined herein and have filed a voluntary petition with the council pursuant to Indiana Code. The Lebanon Advisory Plan Commission held its public hearing at its meeting on March 20, 2023, and forwarded docket 23-19 to this council with a favorable recommendation, eight to zero, to assign the single-family residential zoning classification for the annexation area. The council conducted a public hearing on March 27, 2023, as required by law. The council has adopted a fiscal plan for the annexation of the annexation area in accordance with Indiana Code. The annexation area meets the contingency requirements of Indiana Code. Therefore, the council hereby finds as follows: The annexation area, generally located at the northwest corner of County Road 300 North and State Road 39 and adjacent to the existing corporate limits along the southern boundary of the annexation area, is hereby declared annexed to and declared to be a part of the City of Lebanon. The annexation area is further to include contiguous public highways and rights-of-ways of the public highways, which are adjacent to the annexation area pursuant to Indiana Code. The annexation area is hereby assigned, Council District 4, and shall be come a part thereof immediately upon the effective date of the ordinance. The annexation area is assigned the single-family residential zoning classification and shall be in full force and effect upon passage by this council, publication, and upon the applicable 30-day waiting period, all as provided by Indiana law.
Thank you, Rob. Ordinance has been read. Any further discussion, comments from council?
Sir.
Any public comment concerning ordinance 2023-04? Singing none. Would entertain a motion from council?
I'll make a motion when we approve ordinance number 2023-04.
We have motion to approve, and a second from Keith. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Disposed. That ordinance is adopted unanimously. Thank you, council. Okay, that concludes what I have for old business. Is there anything from council?
No, sir.
New business then. First item up is resolution 2023-03, Contract for Movement of Fill Materials at Stony Eater Bike Park. Kevin Quillik.
Thank you very much. I apologize for those that may have been at our Board of Works meeting to sit through this again. This is not the same resolution, but a resolution of similar content. So where we are at with this and the Stony Eater Bike Park, as many of you remember, New Cold agreed to donate earthwork to the site, agreed to donate actual dirt to the site, and pay for the hauling and trucking costs associated with moving that dirt to the site and stockpiling the site. And this was roughly a $2 million donation towards the park. And this was, as you might recall, this was a private match associated with the ready money. So the total export amount, the total donation amount was just over $2 million, $2,1066 in the New Cold donation, the private match associated with the ready grant. So roughly, what we're looking at now is the contractor for New Cold is Merritt Contracting, local contractor. They'll be picking up and hauling the dirt and stockpiling it at the business park. And what we've looked at with them is, as opposed to just stockpiling it so that we would have to then double-handle that and haul it around the site again at a later date, we looked at what it would cost to have them go ahead and place that while they're in the process of transporting to the site. So that's what we have before you. There are provisions in the state codes related to public work procurement that allow you to direct-select or directly contract for public work efforts like this when there is substantial cost savings to the city. So you can forego some of the normal public bidding process if you can prove and document that there is cost savings. And that's what we're here for tonight. That's what this resolution tries to lay out and demonstrate, is the cost savings. Effectively, the cost savings shapes out like this. If we were to have them pour the donation, stockpile the material, and go away, and then we would go through a normal public bidding process to bid the movement and final placement of that dirt, the estimate that we have is about $870,000, whereby, in contrast, if they were allowed to, while they were hauling it, continue to place the material, the cost estimate is $519,000. So there's roughly a $351,000 savings to the city, and we feel as though that meets the requirements in the state code to call this a substantial savings. There's also a substantial time schedule benefit to allowing this. So what's before you tonight is resolution 2023-3, authorizing us to enter into a contract with Merritt Contracting for the placement of that fill donation material on the bike park site. I know Rob's probably got some further information to add to this when he reads the resolution, but from a technical standpoint, is there anything, any questions or concerns I can try to address?
So essentially, we're doing this resolution just to document, we're acknowledging this, why would this process?
Right. It's my understanding, and Rob could maybe elaborate on this, but if you're going to take these exceptions that are afforded to us under the code, you have to properly document these things. You have to properly document the savings. You have to properly, I guess, maintain these contracts in a place so that they can be reviewed and reserved and reviewed by the public if so needed. So that's why we're here tonight, is to make sure that we're properly documenting this substantial cost savings that allows us to forego the normal bidding process for this work. Did I cover that, Rob?
Yeah, that's accurate.
Okay. Any additional questions for Kevin at this time?
No, sir.
Yeah, so we're not putting any money toward this tonight. Is that my understanding? No, I mean, we've already, so we've already have the ARC money, the American Rescue Plan money of $500,000. We already have the Ready Grant award of $750,000. Now, previously, you made a financial commitment to match those Ready Grant dollars, and we are hoping that we'll put before you at your next meeting this month an appropriation to appropriate the existing sanitation department funds, a portion of the sanitation department funds to provide that dollar-for-dollar match. But for tonight, there's no additional appropriation and none needed for this first phase of earthwork.
This is just us documenting the cost savings of it?
Yeah, okay. Additional questions? Rob, I'll have you read it.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Resolution 2023-03 is a resolution of this council approving the entering into the contract for movement of fill material. Pursuant to the city's Uniform Development Ordinance, UDO, the Lebanon Board of Works and Safety has designated the purchasing agent for the city with all the powers and duties authorized under Indiana Code. Pursuant to Indiana Code, on behalf of the city, the Board of Works is authorized to purchase goods and services without soliciting bids or proposals where there exists a unique opportunity to obtain supplies and/or services at a substantial savings to the city. Whereas New Cold Indianapolis LLC has generously offered to donate and transport approximately 70,000 cubic yards of fill material to the Stony Eater Bike Park. This constitutes a gift of approximately $2 million worth of fill material and transportation services. And whereas Merritt Contracting, Inc., is exclusively contracted to move the filled dirt from the property being graded by New Cold, and has offered to deliver the fill materials directly to the Stony Eater Bike Park site and immediately grade it, as opposed to bounding the fill material to the Stony Eater Bike Park and grading it at a later date. Whereas mounting the fill material to Stony Eater Bike Park site and grading it at a later date is estimated to cost approximately $870,717. Conversely, contracting with Merritt to immediately grade the donated filled dirt upon its delivery to the Stony Eater Bike Park will cost approximately $518,924, whereas the funding for the grading services with Merritt will come from the American Rescue Plan and/or other legally available sources. Whereas the fill material being donated by New Cold is necessary to creating a cap on which the Stony Eater Bike Park may be built. Whereas this council believes contracting with Merritt Contracting, Inc., for the delivering and grading of the donated fill material directly from the New Cold site would constitute a savings of approximately $351,793. Whereas this council believes that the $351,793 of savings outlined above constitutes a unique opportunity to obtain supplies and services at a substantial savings to the city. Therefore, this council incorporates the foregoing recitals as if fully incorporated herein by reference. This council, after consideration, has reviewed the materials and information presented, and recommends that the Board of Works enter into a contract with Merritt Contracting, Inc., for purposes of transporting and grading the fill materials donated by New Cold in accordance with Indiana Code. Upon execution of this resolution, the council directs the Board of Works to proceed with the contract pursuant to the requirements of Indiana Code, and authorizes the use of funds procured through the American Rescue Plan and/or any other legally available sources to meet all the financial obligations stemming therefrom. This resolution shall be in full force and effect immediately upon its adoption.
Okay. Now, the resolution's been read. Further discussion? Dick?
Yeah, I got, Kevin, one question. Would you explain to the council how much dirt, what this will mean to the bike trail? What, will it cover the whole thing? Will it create the bike park that you're trying to create? Or kind of give us a detail of what you think it'll do.
Yeah, good question. When the donation conversation with New Cold came about, we actually adjusted grading plans to match the anticipated donation. So, you know, we're basically adding mass grading condition on the site that requires about a 70,000-75,000-yard import to the site, and that is to correct and perfect all of the landfill cap and landfill drainage on the site. So this does not build any trails. This just is to fortify and perfect drainage on the landfill cap. So, you know, bigger picture, we're still thinking about with the ARC, the ready, and the matching funds from the city, generating about a $2 million fund for the first-phase project. We've already reviewed this with some consultants, so we're also looking at it. We feel as though that $2 million will get us the expenses needed to cover this grading contract, and then that leaves about a million and a half, and that will cover some landscaping, parking lots, utility connections, as well as the main cross-country trail, the signature trail for the park. So this contract just gets us to that base level of grading that the park would be built off of, the mass grading level of that process and progression of building the park.
So theoretically, and again, I'm not speaking for council, I know we've had lots of discussions with the bike park in general, but theoretically, this is the solution to solve the landfill cap drainage, resolve that once and for all, right?
Yeah.
And then, council's will, we can either then build the mountain bike trails on that cap, in accordance with what item says, right? Or theoretically, it could just be, it's now capped and we're done and it's clean.
Yes. In theory, this perfects the cap. This mounds, the cap was already thick enough, but this perfects drainage over the cap, which is a key IDM issue. We've already removed the trees. We've already installed the groundwater monitoring system. So with the vegetation removed, the groundwater monitoring system in place, and the cap drainage perfected, we could walk away and do nothing further and not build a park if that would be something that we would so choose. We really wouldn't tap into the ready money. So if for some reason that was the choice of this council to walk away after we do these improvements, then we would just forfeit that ready money, which we haven't received. It's a reimbursement type of a grant system. We could do that, and we would have the cap perfected, the operation of the closed landfill perfected, and IDM would be satisfied.
Do you see the, in the future here, the opportunity to get more dirt from other sites to help build the trail?
Yeah, I mean, we could always...
I'm talking about the mounds and the things.
Yeah, there's always opportunities that we could do more, more features on the park if we wanted to bring in more dirt. And to be honest, I get calls, probably weekly, with people wanting to donate dirt. Right now, we're not receiving anything because we wanted to make sure that if this goes forward, that Merritt can control the site and isn't having to deal with, you know, extraneous material from miscellaneous sources that we have to handle. So right now, we've kind of shut off all hauling to the site, and we have for a number of months. But could we take more to build bigger and better features? Absolutely. Is it required? No. No, we've got a design... No, no, we've got a design that works and delivers a park without any additional fill if we don't ever take anymore.
Additional questions for Kevin?
I just have one question. Resolution mentions the word "contract" several times, so at a future date, there will be a contract cash that we will be paying to Merritt to do the cap?
There will. I would say, I think it would be appropriate to approve this, and that could be, I don't, Rob, correct me if I'm wrong, but we probably need to maybe add some language here that that contract could be subject to legal review and authorize the mayor to sign.
So that would be approved at the Board of Works, right? Because that's who does all the contracts for the city, where we're the purchasing agent. So that would be with the Board of Works, right? But we only enter into contracts when the financing has been approved by City Council, right? So that's kind of where...
And that could go before the Board of Works at the next meeting on April 24th, which would be the same night that we would be approving appropriations for additional park construction funds.
And we always make those contingent upon financing approvals from the City Council and legal review and all those things too, so.
I have a question for you. Those, the $750,000, you say you don't have it. How do you know for sure you're going to get it?
I don't. It's up to you guys.
We have commitments from the, well, we have a contract with the NPO that's the ready grant money.
Yeah, we have received the ready grant money. We have received all the approvals for the ready grant money.
We've been awarded that, right? But it's also a matching, so, but it's a guaranteed match, right? We've been told, we've been awarded that as long as we match it from our end.
But we have to match the 750, is that what it is?
Yes. And so we have roughly $900,000, $950,000 in the existing sanitation fund that was previously used for operation of the bike park, or operation of the landfill, excuse me, and other trash collection features. It was used for a number of things over the years. But the sanitation fund was set up for the operation of the landfill practices there. And we can use that money for the match money associated with the construction on the landfill site.
So if you want to look at it this way, Keith, we're using the, you know, if we do the disappropriation at the next meeting, right? We're essentially using the sanitation fund money because it's about this cost to finalize, finish the landfill, cap it off, make sure it drains right, resolve it as a issue for the city, right? And then the ready grant money is coming in, and the American Rescue Plan money is coming in to actually then create the park, the bike park on that landfill.
Who was the other one you said, that $500,000?
That was the American Rescue Plan money.
And that was from the resolution we adopted, I think, a year and a half ago or about that.
I had a question. We passed Resolution 2021-10, that was the $100,000 for bike park consulting fees. I've never seen that rolled into any of these funding commitments. Where would that fall under?
Well, I have to go back and look at that appropriation. I'm not sure where that money came out of, but that was used for the environmental engineering services associated with the IDEM Adaptive Reuse Plan and the groundwater monitoring installation and monitoring systems.
I was just wondering, when we show the, again, from your email you sent about proposed funding commitments, we've got ARP grant, sanitation fund, ready grant, fundraising, and TBD. I'm just wondering, where does that $100,000 roll into that?
That $100,000 is not included in that. Really, I'm looking at, the dollar amounts that I've been sharing with you in the last few months have been to move it forward. You know, we've spent that consulting money. Well, not all of it, there's a little bit left as we're still working through the IDEM approvals.
But wouldn't that count toward our commitment, say, for the ready grant or something like that?
It would, but you can only go back so far in using match expenses. There's, I can't remember the timeframe. I don't know if you recall, Mayor. I want to say it was like three to six months is all you can go back in using pre-existing expenses associated with the project. But I'd have to verify that for you.
We're actually kind of lucky that we weren't so far down the road with the project that we could still have this qualify for the grant. Because they also don't want a fund project that we're already going to happen, so.
So when we look at the total cost of this project, though, we should add that money in, correctly?
Yeah, we should. We should, yeah. We've spent, I think it's more than that, we've spent money on tree clearing, we've spent money on the environmental consulting, and we've spent money on the bike park consultant. Off the top of my head, I'd say you're probably in the $280,000, $300,000 number for those sort of pre-construction expenses we've had.
But we would have needed to do the groundwater, groundwater monitoring and the tree clearing just for the landfill, just regardless, right? So that's...
Yeah, the bike park...
It gets to be on what's a bike park versus what's landfill closure.
The bike park specific is only about a $30,000 expense for Hill Ride, who was the bike park consultants.
Well, the question I just keep asking is, how much money have we spent on whatever you want to call a project, capping the landfill, building a bike park, whatever? And the math seems to, it seems a challenge to get that bottom-line figure, so.
It's because they're intertwined, right? But there are two separate goals, right? The first goal is to resolve the landfill, right? And make sure that that's capped safely, done properly, resolved forever, right? And then there's the bike park design, right? So Kevin said, like, the actual bike park associated costs is $30,000. That's what we've done for the design of the actual features, right? So, but the other money we've been spending, like, that's stuff that we had to do regardless whether we were building a park or not. That was to resolve the landfill, to make sure that was capped and done properly, liabilities removed from the city going forward.
Yeah, I have a question too. Has IDEM approved everything?
IDEM has approved the movement and placement of soil on the site, but they've not approved our Adaptive Reuse Plan at this time. We received updated comments from them March 6th, and I hope to be responding to those comments by this time next week.
Again, they've approved that what we're doing to close the landfill, right? So bringing in the dirt, grading it so it drains properly, taking out the trees, the groundwater wells, all those things, that's from IDEM, right? We haven't got the final sign-off if we want to move for in the bike park.
That's what I'm saying, there's more surprises coming, right?
I mean, we're close with it, right? So I mean, we're...
I mean, we're close enough that they've already authorized tree clearing and soil movement on site. It's, we're really just not even arguing, there's just been, it was actually a request for additional information associated with some of the details in the construction of the bike park. So they had some questions about cross-sections of the trails, they had some questions about site utilities, they had some questions and clarifications on landscaping standards and topsoil placement standards, so they're really, they're really construction details associated with building the park. We've gotten through and addressed all the environmental concerns that were more associated with groundwater and drainage and capping the landfill. So these are more park construction-level details that we hope to, as I said, hope to resolve in the next week.
Well, there's no way they could really stop us from...
I mean, I don't think they would, I don't, they don't want to stop us, you know? I mean, we don't have that Adaptive Reuse Plan, but like I said, they have, while we're working on, through these construction details, they have authorized us to start stockpiling dirt. In fact, they authorized us to start stockpiling dirt probably over a year ago. And the preauthorization for tree clearing and the preauthorization for groundwater monitoring systems.
Sounds like to me they're just wanting some of the details on the development of the park itself.
Yeah, so they kind of, IDEM is somewhat siloed, you know, into how they look at things, so really the only, and when they respond with a request for additional information, there are, you know, from the different departments. So now we've addressed all the environmental departments enclosures, we're addressing the engineering enclosure, which really has to do with the construction practices. That's all that's left outstanding at this time.
Any additional questions?
No, sir.
I guess I have one more. Where are we with the county?
Where are we with the county? The county, the last correspondence I had with the county, gosh, is probably six months back, but they felt at this point, because of the findings of the court, that everything associated with the park was administrative at that point. With the exception of if we went larger than the standard for signage, there would be some variances that would be requested for signage. But the construction of the park is all administrative at this point.
Administrative to what, to us?
We have to pull a building permit.
I went back through my documents and I couldn't find it. Did, we won the lawsuit against the county. Did we pay our own legal bills, or did we recover from the county for our legal bills?
No, I paid those out of my consultant lines.
I don't think we were able to recover damages.
I wasn't sure.
That's generally why they don't, no one ever calls them on it, right? Because you can't recover your legal bills. But I was able to pay those with monies I had within my budget to resolve this.
Any questions for Kevin? Any public comment concerning this resolution?
Can I ask a question?
Absolutely, sir, please. You go to the microphone, they're watching at home, so.
I guess, to me, $300,000 sounds like a lot of money. I probably haven't made that in 20 years of working. So I just am a little confused. If we're talking about just capping the area, that's what we're talking about now? And that's, we'll save the $300,000 by just capping the area and getting rather, or covering appropriately the dump site? Is that what we're talking about now?
Well, the actual capping would cost $500,000. But if we didn't have this resolution, have the company that's doing, that's dropping it off there, it would be $800,000. So we're saving $300,000 by adopting this resolution.
So that doesn't have any, you're not saving anything with that to use towards the park? This would have had to been spent, whether you did anything else?
Yeah, we would have had to pay to move, masquerade the dirt to our drainage plan to safely cap the landfill regardless of what the function...
So you couldn't take this $300,000 and place it someplace else?
No, it's a theoretical savings, right?
I just wondered what happens to that $300,000?
Well, it's a theoretical savings, right? Because it's, if we went to then bid it out, right, the bid would be $800,000, right? But if the company's saying, hey, well, if we can do this now as we're bringing it in...
Two steps versus one step.
Correct, sir, yes.
Okay. And you knew that upfront when you originally started the deal, that it was going to cost the $800,000? Then they provided this kind of deal on the side later on? Is that how this all came about, or?
No, I think we just, as the process went through it, we...
Assumed it was going to cost around $800,000?
Yeah.
Okay. And then they said, hey, if we can do it two-step or do it one step, we can save money.
Kevin, can you get up and explain that a little bit so they'll understand, everybody will understand?
Maybe something that's worth also saying is that if you were looking at some of the budget scenarios we went through throughout the process, if you were to total those things up, which included us needing to find a source of this dirt and bring it to the site, then we were in that $3 million range of what it would cost to find the dirt source, haul it to the site, place the soil. So $2 million of that is being donated. And what we're saying is, we've got documentation that shows if you were just to bring it to the site and put it in a pile, we would spend $800,000 moving that pile around the site. But if we can contract directly with the contractor that's bringing the...
Is starting the process.
That is, yeah, that is bringing the earthwork donation to us, that is not $800,000, it is $500,000. And there's the $300,000 savings.
Yeah. Sir, could you state your name, just for the record? Sir, can you state your name for the record for us, for our minutes?
I'm Jerome Harris.
I live at 2305 Wind Haven. Okay, thank you. Any additional public comment? Okay. Unless there's any further discussion from council, would entertain a motion concerning Resolution 2023-03.
Make a motion, we approve Resolution 2023-03.
We have a motion to approve, is there a second? Second from Morris. All senators say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Disposed? That is adopted unanimously. Thank you, council. Okay, that concludes what I have for new business. Is there anything from council? Mike, do you have an announcement to make?
Yes, the Lebanon Columbus Pancake Supper is this Thursday from 5:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. All proceeds are used to help fund our children's programs here in the city of Lebanon. So be there and be there early because we sold a lot of tickets.
So last plug before next year, Mike, okay? John?
I received a letter from the Food and Beverage, from our nonprofit, from the Black Box. I'd like to read it real quick because it's really nice that they can reach out to us and kind of update us on what's going on. But it's, thank you so much for your generous grant for $1,500. Because of your donation, we were able to produce two different productions of a Christmas carol, providing opportunities for every child who was interested. And it just says, thank you again for supporting the arts and the growth of our students. Sincerely, Black Box. So it's really nice that when you meet and make donations to different nonprofit organizations that they do reach out once in a while to thank us. And we get quite a few, but this one was the first time the Black Box had ever reached out to us, so it was kind of nice that they sent a nice letter to us. So I wanted to thank them for that.
Thank you, John. Any other announcements or general discussion? Any general public comment? Okay, move on to claims. Would entertain a motion concerning the claims.
Make a motion to pay the claims.
Motion to pay the claims from Sierra. Is there a second? Second from Brent. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Disposed? Okay. Would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion, we adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Morris. Our next city council meeting will be Monday, April 24th at 11:15 p.m. All in favor of adjournment, say aye?
Aye.
Disposed? All right, we are adjourned.